All right, so we have everyone, let me, I see, it looks like. It looks like JD is still getting, trying to get audio. So we don't, we have a quorum, I see JD, up, good, I see JD, hey JD, you can hear, all right, JD's responding, Laura, you're out there, your video and audio is off.
Yep, hi, I'm here, my video seems to have a problem in Zoom, so I'm just gonna stay on video unless I need to turn it on while I'm talking.
All right, that sounds great, Laura, thank you, okay, so we have a quorum, it's 5:02 PM, I'll call the meeting to order. I noticed we have a number of folks attending tonight for the DMCTC topic. And what I think I'm gonna do, what I think I'm gonna do, I normally like to move things like that up earlier in the agenda, just so my good neighbors don't have to listen to a lot of planning board administrative. But maybe what I'll do is we'll do a little bit of our regular agenda just to give people some time to assemble, I see another person, Isaac Fleischer is trying to join, so. So, okay, so we're gonna do a little bit of the regular agenda and then I'll try to move the DMCTC topic a little bit earlier in the agenda. I think I can get through the first couple of items pretty quickly. The first item that was on our agenda was review the handout on bylaw proposals for annual town meeting. The, it turned out that the deadline to submit that to the town administrator was yesterday, circulated the document via email and people sent me comments individually, which I, which I took, I addressed and submitted a new document by yesterday's deadline, I guess I'll simply. Let me just see, I don't know that I need to bother people with this, but maybe I'll just take a minute and share this final document. Sharing my screen, okay, hopefully everyone can see my screen. Now, I can miss this, bigger. So I'll just summarize that I ended up mashing up some material that we've developed and circulated and discussed over a number of past meetings, some, and ultimately ended up with a three-page report that's going to go in the town meeting booklet, so that this, that fits the pa, the number of pages that were allocated. So we have just a very short summary of each of the six amendments that we're proposing this year. One, the deletion of growth control, two, the changes to the Aqua for Protection bylaw, the amendment to the zoning map. There's more material on the new community housing bylaw, this is where I did a little bit of a mashup with just a very short summary of what the bylaw is intended to do in the first paragraph, and then we had developed a separate document that really summarized what we mean by community housing and how that relates to this bylaw. And in the process, I got updated 2024 income limits, I got assistance from Megan Rhodes at Franklin Regional Council of Governments, she pointed me to the right numbers, so I got new income limits, I got new rent caps for 2024, so I got that into the document. I got in a short summary of the changes to our table of use regulations that are complimentary to the new community housing bylaw. And lastly, a very brief summary of the changes we're proposing to the table of dimensional requirements. So the warrant will contain all the bylaw language and it will also contain the information about recommendations and support for these various amendments from other appropriate boards and committees in town, so it's left out of this particular document. To help people understand the zoning map, I got it down to, and I turned the zoning map on its side, so people are gonna have to like, turn the booklet on their side to get a better view of the maps. But I put in the proposed new zoning map that is going to be voted on. And then, in the final page, I put in this modified map that we've, we've circulated that is not the new zoning map, it's really for illustration and education only, to highlight what protection zones are changing as we move from the current map to the proposed new map. And so we got that all into three pages and submitted, so I think I'll just simply ask if anyone on the board has any question, this is gonna be a public document. This is part of our, what we communicate to residents about these bylaw amendments. So there's like maybe a last chance, I think things have gone to the printers, but if anyone caught anything egregious, this is the time to speak up, so just take a pause to see if anyone on the board has any concerns, questions. I'll allow a pregnant pause, since we're on Zoom and I can't look you all in the eye. So I'm gonna assume that that means we're good. All right, so that's, that's done. I wanna move to the next item. How are we doing, all right, it looks like we sort of got stabilized in a number of participants, I'll do the next brief item on the memo to town clerk about eligible locations, let me just speak about that. And then what I hope to do is move the DMCTC topic to the next item, coming, coming right after this, and then we'll do the permit application approval of minutes and afterwards, okay. All right, so, again, let me share, I'm gonna share my screen, cuz I wanna show you. I'm not going to actually show you the. You should want to get to share my, selectively share my. So I'm gonna share, let me make this larger so we can all see it, so as a follow-up to our vote on the community housing bylaw, you may remember when we voted that to approve it, we also discussed this concept of eligible locations and agreed as part of that vote that because community housing, that there were three zoning districts in Waitley that were eligible locations per the definition of the zoning act. I'm gonna give you a little background on this memo to town clerk. We're not gonna actually review the memo because I'm still awaiting town council input on this memo, I'm gonna give you a little bit of the background on it. What I'm sharing on my screen is a section, section 1A of the zoning act, and I wanna highlight for, for you all the definition in the zoning act for eligible locations. All right, so the zoning act defines eligible locations as areas that are highly suitable locations for residential or mixed youth, smart growth, starter homes and so forth. All right, so this is the definition of what an eligible location is, the significance of that definition will be clear in a moment. So keep in mind that there's this concept of an eligible location. Now, in section five of the zoning act, section five describes how new zoning ordinances and bylaws, what the procedure is for adopting new zoning bylaws. I'm gonna scroll deep into section five. And highlight this paragraph for the moment where the standard rule for votes at town meeting is that I'm gonna really highlight this. All right, so we all know that your typical zoning bylaw presented at town meeting needs to pass by a two-thirds vote, right, that's, that's the general rule. But there are certain cases where only a simple majority rather than a two-thirds majority is acceptable for zoning bylaw amendments. And I'll point out this paragraph. I'm gonna highlight just the first part of it. So when there is an amendment to a zoning ordinance or bylaw and creating and adding a new community housing bylaw to our zoning bylaws is an example of an amendment to a zoning ordinance. And when you're doing it by special permit as we do in the community housing bylaw, if we, if we are allowing these uses by special permit in an eligible location, then according to the zoning act, only a simple majority is needed to pass. So the real question we were trying to understand was, does the community housing bylaw require a two-thirds majority to pass like all the others? Or can it pass by a simple majority vote at town meeting? And the town council's advice was that it can pass with a simple majority as long as we, the planning board, have determined what the eligible locations are in town. And we discussed this and determined that the agriculture residential districts one and two and the commercial district were the three zoning districts that collectively were eligible locations per the zoning act definition. And we're sort of following that story so far. So we made that determination, we actually voted on it, though we voted on it to kind of bundled with our vote for the community housing bylaw. Town council recommended as just further support for, with the attorney general's office regarding a simple majority vote for passage, that we, the planning board, send a, submit a memo to the town clerk and or the town moderator of the entities involved in determining voting at town meeting. And have, and give them a memo conveying in writing our determination that those three zoning districts are the eligible locations in town for, you know, per this definition in the zoning act. See Tim has, so anyway, town council recommended that we put together such a memo and town council said it was maybe just a paragraph or so, and he would be happy to help provide the language for such a memo. And I've been trying to work with town council to just get that language together. So right now, I don't yet have a draft memo from town council on this topic. All I wanted to do is update you on the planning board about what it's all about, and I hope to have that, I hope to have that soon. Questions, did I confuse anybody about eligible locations, two-thirds votes versus simple majority votes? Why we might consider AR1, AR2 and commercial to be eligible locations, any questions? Can mostly see Sarah looking very calm about the whole situation, so. I'm going to take that to mean that we're good, so no action on this item tonight, just consider yourself a little bit more informed about what's going on. But the game plan for town meeting, what I, what I'm thinking of doing, well, based on count, town council advice, we believe that the community housing bylaw can only needs a simple majority and that this memo is just additional documentation to make it clear that, you know, we planned this in advance and, and made a determination about this. Okay. All right, I'm gonna stop sharing this. So I think what we're gonna do now is we're going to move, cuz I see we now have, I think, mostly everybody with an interest in the DMCTC marijuana cultivation topic. So let's, let's start that, what I wanna do is just provide a little bit of context for why I opted to put this on tonight's agenda. So in a way, I, I sort of, there's a bit of no good deed goes unpunished here, in the sense that Jared Glansberger of DMCTC kept me, on his own initiative, kept me informed of some recent communications that he's been receiving, in particular about screening along the northern fence line of their property at Seven River Road. So this was entirely involuntary on the part of DMCTC, the planning board, to my knowledge, has not received any complaints from residents or concerns, it really just came from DMCTC. I, after some email correspondence with Jared, I thought it made sense for me personally to get a little bit of a feeling, I haven't visited the facility at Seven River Road since we last did a site review and approved it in October of 2022, seemed like a perfectly reasonable occasion for me to stop by and see what what the situation was, get my in-one eyes on it, Jared was very willing and, you know, it made it very easy for us to find a time to, to make that happen. So I did a site visit, basically I went there with keeping with records of the conditions that the planning board had placed on the Seven River Road facility when we approved the site plan. We walked the property, we also walked Three River Road right next door. I would say that my general, my general assessment was that the site plan conditions had largely been met, there was this outstanding issue of the northern fence line not being screened in any way when I visited, and this was just a couple of weeks ago. So there was no, no screening of the northern fence line and there had been a condition to that effect in the original site plan review, and we talked about that. There's records in the minutes going back to November of 2022, where the adjacent butter to the north, Tim Smith, who's here, indicated that the original planning board requirement for landscape screening could create an issue, that the screening could lead to excessively tall plants that could shade his property and impact his agricultural operations there. So back in circa November of 2022, there were plans afoot for DMCTC and Tim Smith to work out a, an appropriate screening arrangement that would meet the requirements and the intention of the planning board when we set these landscape screening conditions in 2022, but not have the adverse impact that Mr. Smith was concerned about, so that was all to be agreed upon, we had that discussion in about November of 2022. And the planning board has not been following it since then, so evidently since that time, no landscape planting had been done, Jared confirmed that that was still a matter that still seemed to be under discussion. So at the time of my site visit, my recent site visit, we agreed that we knew Jared was looking into landscape screening options and intending to talk further to Tim Smith. I sent a email inquiry to Mr. Smith to just find out independently how, what he was thinking about the screening issue, and he raised that with some other questions. And so I basically decided that it might be wise just to get everybody on the same page, to put this on tonight's agenda and give interested parties a chance to share what they are thinking about the, the situation. I've been made aware over the last few days, there's been additional email correspondence on the issue, my overall sense is that DMCTC is trying to behave as a good neighbor and, and live up to their commitments. I do have maybe some questions myself, but what I'm going to attempt to do is I think what I wanna do is I'm gonna moderate this conversation a little bit, I see, I know that Ethan Haslett's here, Jared's here, there are some other people, Tim Smith is here, so I think what I wanna do is since DMCTC initiated this, you know, like, maybe they've, sorry Jared, if you regret bringing this to my attention, but I really feel you did the right thing. I'd like to give Jared the floor first to update, you know, me, the board and all of us about where he feels matters stand at this point. And then I think I'm going to try to call on all the other participants here and see, starting with Tim and Ethan and others, and see if we can get this all sorted out tonight, okay, that's my game plan. All right, so, as I said, Jared, please come off mute and share where you think we are with respect to the issues that have been raised.
Sure, hey guys, so I guess my plan would be to give a brief summary of where I think we are and then really to turn over to Tim, who I think, you know, is our northern, you know, our butter immediately to the north, and then if if Chris Green is on the call, you know, to, to check in with him as well, cuz he has a direct line of sight to our, to our fence. So the update is we've been in touch with a number of different landscaping companies. You know, we've sent the, the overall plan to these companies, I've received a, a couple quotes back. I expect to collect, you know, about five in total. We have the good fortune of Chris Green being a contractor and capable of doing plant installation, so, you know, in the best case, I would work with Chris to have, you know, the plants installed. So I'm, you know, I'm trying to both be a good neighbor and understand Tim Smith's concerns about shading. I'm trying to do this as economically as possible, I'm trying to do it in a way that you know, conforms to the interests of, of the community and neighborhood and isn't, you know, an overly burdensome obligation on my part. So I've reached out to Tim and, you know, I, I expect that he and I should be able to get together once I have these in hand, perhaps with Chris Green as well, and to come up with a workable, a workable plan. So that's my intention on the northern property side, side. You know, as far as timing is concerned, the fields are extremely wet, we've had a lot of rainfall just from, you know, a horticultural perspective, the fall when it's drier out and the, the plants are dormant is typically the ideal time to have these things installed. I've heard that uniformly from, you know, each landscaping group that I've spoken with. And so that's broadly speaking, my plan is gather this information, bring it to Tim and, and Chris and, you know, get, get it going.
Okay, very good, the, there were, there were two issues, there was landscape screening and then there is a matter of the driveway, and what I wanna do again.
So Brent, if I, if I may, if we could just take it point by point, if Tim, if Tim would, would react to that, just to make sure that that's acceptable to him.
That sounds, that sounds good to me, Tim Smith, please, you've got the floor.
Yeah, yeah, that plan sounds good, my biggest concern always was not towering trees that would cast that shadow, but something that would just go to the height, mature height, that would grow to the mature height to cover the, the fence, you know, so you just didn't see it, that, that, that was my concern. But if that, but if I get the planting in the fall for, for a better result of the health of the plants. That's, that sounds good, and we just can come up, I don't, I don't know what, what would work out there for plants, but I'm sure Jared would have some people that had some good ideas, so.
Yep, and I, and Tim, I can provide you with that list that we sort of pre-selected, I, I've already soft-socialized with Chris as well.
Okay, sounds good.
I'll, I'll say personally that as I've been dealing with this and looked at screening around Waitley, I have to say that I've been underwhelmed by how, how, how screening works, or maybe the, the difference in expectations between, like, I think what I see a lot, can I drive up and down Chris, Christian Road and probably Sarah feels the same way, the screening of the solar facility is pretty, pretty dreadful, though I don't know. You know, I think the intent, and I'll, I'll try to make the relevance of this point about solar to to Jared's northern fence line, but I think the intent of the board was, and, and for butters and neighbors, like, they didn't really wanna see the fence, right? They just wanted plantings there and sort of the, the solar and the fencing to be, to be hidden behind visually appealing vegetation, and year in, year out, that's clearly not working, though I have, I understand that to make it work, you know, requires property owner level like care and feeding and nurturing of these plants, you know, making sure they're watered and I, and I know that the solar company is clearly not doing that, or they're checking in once or twice a season, so for you know, I know it's, 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 we have these big expectations, but it's hard to do, I think we probably have to do a better job holding the solar company's feet to the fire, but I understand where Jared is coming from too, and this sort of like a comment to neighbors that we'll get plantings there, I think we would like, we want DMCTC to make a good faith effort to care for and maintain those plantings so that they establish and they grow and they're, and dead ones are replaced. But I also understand and appreciate that can be hard to get watering this, you know, out to these lines on the other side of fences, and I also understand with DMCTC's case, they have to keep the landscape screening far enough away from the fences to not pose other kinds To not pose other kinds of security concerns. Is that right, Jared?
Yeah, that's exactly it. I mean, so there's other folks that submitted plans to the triple C. Uh, that were rejected because it created an opportunity for people to hide in the bushes and potentially break into the fence. So there just has to be a gap between, you know, and also you could, I suppose, use the plants to hop over the fence. So there just has to be a a large enough channel that it doesn't create a threat, um, you know, that that the beautification effort isn't. Running orthogonal to the security purpose of the fence in the first place.
Thank you. I just, I I feel like the the challenge for the planning board is, on the one hand, to respect the. Desire of neighbors to not necessarily have to look at what might be considered an eyesore. Like they like to look at vegetation rather than a long green fence line. But at the same time, we, the planning board, don't want to impose um. You know, uh, uh, an exorbitant, a financially, financial hardship on a business to maintain. Um, so I I think there's going to be a balance to be struck between a reasonable fence screening. Um, and something that might seem like it's uh hidden behind a forest. So Tim's good. Were there others? I'm trying to see. I see certain people on video. Maybe I'm just gonna call out. Names of people I think may want to speak and give you a chance to speak. On this topic or ask any questions, and I'll just sort of go around before we deal with the driveway issue. So I I know Ethan Haslett was one of the ones concerned about the screening, so I want to give you a chance to come off mute. And um. Say what you might like to say.
Sure, thank you very much. Um, I guess the concern I had is that I'm I'm looking at the email history that I have and. We discussed this back in fall of two thousand and twenty-two, and I asked to be informed as to how things would proceed. And to my knowledge, and I may have missed an email, I did not receive anything from that point. And so my concern is just dislanguished and nothing happened. And so I brought it back up, and I think. Perhaps that's why we're all here, but I would like something to be done. In an expeditious fashion, but also taking into account all the points being made.
Okay.
So that's it.
So based on what you've heard, assuming that. So I think, based on what I've heard, there will be plantings put in in the fall. And. We will hope that they will start to establish. So this is, there's not going to be much change in the landscape. During two thousand and twenty-four till the fall. New plants go in in the fall, then we might start to see some meaningful impact on the visual. Landscape sometime in two thousand and twenty-five. I do think it's, it it is a fair point and a fair question. How it is that this um, this landscape screening. That was agreed to. Has taken so long to. To really get addressed. Uh, I would recommend Ethan and anyone that the planning board would be. The first place to go for questions. And of course, I think I would generally encourage neighbors to try to work things out amongst themselves. If they, and then if they don't feel that they're getting, or they don't know what the. What is or isn't required, or what is or isn't expected, the planning board is the right place to go to get those questions answered. But Ethan, how do you feel, based on what you, we, we think this, the way we, it sounds like it's gonna play out. Will this be okay with you? And then we make sure we check in in, say. Spring of two thousand and twenty-five to see how the screening is going?
Uh, I think that sounds fine. I I do think it would be good to have an update this fall to make sure things are on track.
I agree. So I I. I don't think that we'll necessarily need a planning board meeting for it, but I, the planning board will take the action. To follow up with DMCTC in the fall. Um, and I'm happy to, if. I would like to request that anyone who would like to be informed by the planning board, I don't think it's really appropriate to be asking. Businesses in town to provide updates um on their operations to arbitrary interested stakeholders. Uh, but if Ethan and others would like updates from the planning board. Get on my radar. Send an email to planningboardallone word at Wheatley dot org. And I'll make sure that after we follow up, we'll communicate to you what, what's, what's worth knowing. And if we don't, then you hold the planning board accountable, which is appropriate. We're your, we're your, we're your neighbors. So, you know, yell at me, but um. Let's, let's try to, let's try to do it that way. So the planning board will follow up with DMCTC. About action with respect to screening in the fall, and again, in the following spring. And share updates with interested stakeholders who've notified the planning board by email. That they would like to be notified. Okay?
Um, and Brent, just a little, oh, sorry.
Let me hear. I'll recognize you in a second, Chris. Go ahead, Ethan.
When is an appropriate date to email you for a follow-up?
You can email the planning board anytime you want. I would say, what I'm suggesting or or requesting is that you email me like today and just say. I would like to be notified. Of updates related to the landscape screening at Seven River Road. And I'll put you on my list, and I'll be sure to do that. And let's assume that if you don't hear from me by. The end of September of this year, then follow up with me. I mean, I think you have a reasonable expectation that by the end of September, we should have an update. I mean, I guess. Jared, we would expect some action in September versus, say, October?
Yeah, I mean, I'll listen to whatever the landscapers have to say about what the optimal time to do it is, and, you know, uh, in consultation with with Chris. Uh, and Tim, you know, I I think I'll be able to to give a an update to the board.
Okay, alright, so, so the the default is gonna be. By the end of September, and I'll let you know, I'll let interested parties know. Don't assume I have your email. You have to email the planning board to make sure I have your email. I don't, there's no easy way for me to get people's emails, and I don't want to get it secondhand.
Is there any way I could chime in?
Um, I see Kate McKinnon.
That's Chris Green, but same thing.
Okay, hello, Chris.
Hey, how are you?
Um. Good, well, go ahead. I know Chris wanted to jump in, so I am not forgetting you, Chris.
Nope, that's fine. Go ahead.
But let's uh.
Hey, Jared, do you want to go first?
Let's hear from Chris Green, because you're, you have something specific to say about the planting schedule and so forth.
I do. I think, um, again, I. Am staring at the fence line as we speak, and I, Ethan is my friend, Tim Smith is my friend, we're all neighbors, Jared is my friend. We've become good friends. I think there's an easy solution to this, and I think the solution is, is Jared's willing to plant this. I'm willing to do the work. Uh, we'll come up with a plan with some low-growing trees, bushes, whatever it is. Um, and I would love to do it right now. I just. Don't feel that, right now, as much as I'd like to see a bunch of trees covering that fence, is the time, so. I think that me, Jared. Tim, Ethan should all take a walk down the fence. Figure it out and plant it up and be done with it, because it's, it's not something I want to look at either.
Yeah.
At all. I really don't. I'm s- I I'm sitting at my pool, looking out here on the computer and staring at a fence. I don't like it either. But it's there, it's going to be there. So I think everyone needs to come to terms with that. And just, let's pick out some plants, let's figure out what we want to do, and I'm willing to do it whenever the time is right. And I think, I think. Honestly, since we've kind of passed the budding of all the evergreens and everything, it would be better to plant it in the fall. Uh, that way we don't get a a drought issue where evergreens die. I mean, I just planted arborvitae on my property in front of Seven River Road and. Half of them are dying, so. Um. I, in my opinion. I think you're right. I think everybody should. Kind of get together, figure out a plan, uh, the neighbors. And get it planted up the way we want to see it, so Tim doesn't have shading of his field. Uh, Ethan is happy with everything. I'm happy with everything. Um, and I've talked to Jared at length about all of this stuff. Um, and now he's my neighbor too. He used to be Ben Rawls or Lou Rawls, whatever. Um. I think it's an easy solution for everyone. Let's get it planted. It's not going away. Nothing's going to happen. Let's put some nice stuff out there, get it planted up, and that's the end of it. But I do agree with Tim that, you know, if if we don't want to shade the field. Then we should plant the proper plants. So Jared sent me like a planting schedule of, you know. Four or five different plants. Uh, I don't agree with all of them, especially the holly bushes, but. I think the four of us should get together and just take a walk and do, like you said, more neighborly. You know, discourse and say, okay, this is what I want, this is what I want, and I'm happy to do it tomorrow. I just don't think tomorrow is the right time.
Okay, that's super helpful. Chris, that's super helpful. I do have a question then back to you, which is, as I said, as you you heard me. Slightly rant about um. Poor screening of, say, the solar field. Like, what are reasonable expectations that we should all have about these plantings? Taking and, you know, providing adequate, whatever, again, I don't look at that fence. So I'm really looking to all of you to have some reasonable sense of. Wha- what is, what's ideal and what's acceptable and what's.
Yeah, if you want to be completely honest with you, it's in ten years, it's gonna look like every single field. That is separated by a line of trees. It's gonna be grown up with weeds and vines and everything. You're never gonna see the fence. I know that's not what Jared wants. But that is the, I mean, that's the truth. If you don't maintain it, if you don't mow it, if you don't do all that stuff. That's the divider between every field in Wheatley. I've lived here for forty years. I was born here. That's the way it is. Um, the solar fields, I think they're trash. I mean, I think, I think the way that they said that they were gonna plant up those fences. Um, they didn't do it the way they said they were gonna do it, and, you know, putting in arborvitae every ten feet or twenty feet or whatever. It'll take. Thirty years before they even come close to screening the field, so. I think if, and again, this directly impacts me. Ethan, who is a friend of mine, Tim Smith, he's a friend of mine, we're all neighbors, we all get along, we all basically share the same property, the same fields. If, if the planning board or the, you know, whatever board is, you know, gonna say, okay, it's okay for the solar field. To put that in there and put that green screen up, that fence, and then say, oh, yeah, we're gonna plant it up. Well, you better do it properly, because if you don't do that. Then you gotta hold him to the same standard that you hold everybody else in town to. And, you know. I feel that that's sort of the, the thing in Wheatley now is, eh, no one is holding, you know, like. It doesn't matter if you're on the top or on the bottom. You have to have the same standards for everyone. If you want to shield that fence line, then you have to do it properly, and the first guy who puts it in has to do it properly. And if he does it properly, in the right way, then the next guy who does it also has to do the same thing. And I think that's the standard that we should hold ourselves to. If we don't. I I guess, if we don't have, if we have an expectation for what it should look like, it should have already happened on Christian Lane. It should have already happened everywhere that there's a solar field. And that would be a good starting point for everybody to look at and say, hey, look at what these guys did. This is what we agreed to. Now we see what it looks like. And now that's what we're gonna hold Jared to, right? So if, if, I would love to say, hey, Jared, although he's a friend of mine. Plant it up so I can't see a single thing, no matter what. You do it properly, because those guys down the street did it. But if they don't do it, then we kind of have to say. Well, it, do it like those guys did it. So if they put a hundred feet of fence up and they plant three arborvitae. Well, you're not shielding anything. So I would love to see this whole fence line covered with trees. Low enough so that it didn't shade Tim's field, because I don't feel like that property should affect any one of our properties. Right? I I I think they should all be, it was, you know. No more impact than before. That was the, that was the agreed term that we went to. So now we're staring at a fence.
Alright, alright, this has been super helpful, um, and I think a note to the planning board, I see you, Sarah. I want to give Chris a chance to weigh in, sort of a note to the planning board, not tonight. We're, I think we do need to revisit the question of the screening of the solar facilities around town. And our expectations, because I think Chris has a point, but that's, you know, a a topic for another night, so.
This point, just to finish up be- before I go, is if that happens to everyone else. In town, all the other companies that are doing it, then I would love to hold Jared to the same standard. But being said, if not, it seems unfair to me. Even though I'm staring at the fence as we speak.
Yeah.
It doesn't seem reasonable to say, hey. As much as I would like it to happen, it doesn't seem reasonable to say, hey, you gotta cover this whole thing right away so we can't see it.
Yeah.
Because that's not how plantings work either, and I don't want to plant a bunch of, you know, bushes too close to each other, so it. So it shields it right away. And I also don't want to shade Tim's field, and I also don't want to, you know. Piss off any other neighbors either, so I think if we take. I think the plan going forward would be to sort of. Do the status quo of what's going on, uh, and maybe Jared will be. In, go a little bit further and put a couple more in there to make it a little bit nicer, and I think that he would be willing to do that.
Absolutely, absolutely my intention.
Yes, exactly.
Oh, that, that, that works for me. I think I'd ask that, uh, you know, updates on this or progress reports. Periodically, when there's something worth sharing with the planning board, somebody do that, maybe DMCTC. But at the latest, I'll take the initiative and follow up by the end of September to see where we are. Chris Chamberlain.
Oh, thanks. I think the conversation's moved on, I, uh, but I guess, uh, Brent, you had. Talked about the the delay, and I'm gonna take some of the blame for that. I think this has been, the planting plan has been a little bit of a moving target. Um, perhaps the original sin was back in two thousand and twenty when we were all working remote, I let my landscape architects off the leash a little bit. And some of those initial choices, uh, were were causing Tim some concern. Um, but I think everything that I've heard is great, and especially Chris's last point, that you've got to, you've got to put the plants in with an eye to what they're gonna look like. Ten, fifteen, twenty years down the road, which means that they're not gonna be perfect on day one. But if they're established correctly, you know, especially if you've got something fast-growing, within a year or two, you should really see them starting to take off.
Yeah, and that, as I said, I I I may want to just follow up with you offline to. Understand better, like what we can, what we can do about some of the other fences in town. But, but thank you. I appreciate that. Sarah.
Just what I seem to recall from many of conversations about landscaping, we try to focus on. Native species, deer-resistant species. And the other thing is the solar requirements do seem to correlate with this to some extent in terms of height. But the solar has been very much about doing the bare minimum.
Yeah.
So it would be appreciated, I'm sure, by the abutters who look at the fence.
Yeah, like I said.
But we really, yeah, we've, and then that's, well, Chris said he wasn't pleased with holly. Holly is very deer-resistant and ten, and depending on the variety, can grow smaller. Oh, another thing about the Christian Lane one. It has severe wetland issues.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and they have been addressing that on a yearly basis, replacing items that have died because of, it's sitting in a swamp.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so hopefully, barring this past year where everything is a swamp. I think this site is drier and has a better chance. Um, but. We've really been trying to go, let's not put in a full row of arborvitae. Number one, deer really like them. In a mix makes the eye. It fades a little bit more in the eye, but that's what I see. It fades a little bit more in the eye, but that's what I seem to remember from some of our prior emphasis on plantings.
Great, great. Thank you. Thank you so much, Sarah. Um, any other comments or questions from the board members? You, some, you know, JD and Laura, this has all happened before your time on the board, so. Is there, I'm ready to move off the landscape screening topic unless there's somebody. Here on the call tonight that would like to comment. And you can just go ahead.
I'd love to talk about the driveway then.
Okay, very good. So what I'll do is, um. I'm going to do is to help people better understand what we're dealing with with respect to the driveway. Let me just. Again, do a screen share. Uh, so now I'm sharing the plot, the approved site plan for the Seven River Road facility. Zoom in a little bit here, just so we can see. I, and I will recognize, just here. And for, um. A plan, because I think this question had come up and there were some people asking about just. The, the fence line itself and there are certain bump outs. There's normally a 50 foot setback. From the property line to the fence line, but because of wetlands within the property and to. The planning board and the conservation commission and DM CTC agreed that there would be certain bump outs in the fence line. Bringing the fence closer to the property line and, and basically not. Adhering to the 50 foot setback for portions of the northerly fence to protect wetlands within the property. So that was the explanation for why the, the northern fence line is not just a straight line. But it's the driveway that we're, we want to focus on here. So Jared, what do you want to?
Yeah, Brett, if you would just zoom in, uh, tightly to that, um, that main entrance there.
Let me do that. This doesn't, this tool makes it a little bit more challenging for me to. Get that in there, but I think I've done it. Does this work for people?
That's great.
Okay.
That's great. So we, um, we have shifted the driveway southward. But the imprint of the existing older driveway is still there. So that results in a wider driveway.
So this, when I'm sort of running my mouse, it's a little hard.
Yes, exactly.
Old gravel drive that ran very close to the property line.
Yes. Yes. So that's the existing non-conforming driveway that persists. Um, and as I understand it from Tim, his concern, and it's a reality. Is that people entering our driveway, if you zoom, if you're able to zoom even closer. Uh, they, so that little, uh, squiggly lined circle there at the border, at the. Uh, northeast corner, that's, that's a tree. And people tend to take that turn sharply and they inadvertently drive over Tim's. Uh, Tim's property in, in doing that. And that has led to a rutting out of some of his property in. You know, and roughly the same triangle that you see there, which I think is the, is the apron or the older apron. So we've, as a temporary stopgap, just put a post with a concrete base. With a sign saying drive slow to obstruct people from making that turn. Um, so the, the current driveway is roughly in the shape. Uh, and position that is asked by this plan and the, you know, the, uh, what do you call it? The, um. Entry sign protect, yeah, the, the, uh, the drain is the, is sort of the reference marker there. So the drain is where the drain is supposed to be.
Yep.
Um, so we have protected the existing roadway drain. We've got a wide road. And as I understand it from Tim, and I would, again, you know, want to turn this over to Tim to make sure I'm understanding what his concerns are. I want to make sure people aren't taking that turn. Uh, too tightly and, you know, inadvertently driving on his property and then widening a ditch. And, you know, widening the, widening the apron, uh, at the enter, entrance and exit of the site.
Now, what I remember, I'll give the floor to Tim in a second here. What I remember and I looked at the. I reviewed the minutes of the meeting where this was discussed in October of 2022. This area, this apron area. It was the highway superintendent that had requested that the apron be paved asphalt. Versus just gravel because the highway superintendent was concerned that gravel aprons. Uh, just lead to a lot of gravel debris washing into the roadway. And the minutes suggest that we had that discussion. I could bring up the minutes if anyone wants to see it. Okay, now, uh, but. So is there? I guess I'll, I'm saying that my understanding of this plan that was agreed to. Is that there would be a paved apron. Adjacent to the roadway, so asphalt paving. And then the rest of the gravel. Is that going to be done?
I mean, we can certainly take a look at it. Um, the, you know, I, I think when Keith was looking at it. Um, we had freshly laid the gravel and that was leading to the excess coming into the street. Um, I, I think that's no longer a concern. Um, but if that's a concern that Tim has, then it's certainly, you know, something, uh, that I need to, I need to consider. Um, I'd love to.
This is the section from the minutes. So these are, I'm just showing minutes of the meeting of October 25th, 2022. So now, Chris, Chris is, um, listed here as. Being one of the parties that had no objection to this. Rest, does this catch you by surprise for some, for any reason? Because I think there, I'm hearing there are a couple, there's an issue that Tim has about the, the. Entrance in some sense migrating or being too ill-defined and too close to his property line. And vehicles cutting sharply across what is effectively his property line. I see an understanding in minutes and reflected on the plan. That there would be a paved apron. After which there would be gravel and it seems to me that that solves the problem. You have a paved apron. Small section that's paved, you have a clearly defined entrance way off the road. And then it's gravel from there on. So we're not talking about something that's particularly expensive and it makes it very clear. What the entrance is from the road to the property.
So from, from DMC's perspective, um, you know, we see, you know, that we have a prior existing. Non-conforming entrance and exit. Um, and we'd like to talk to Keith Bardwell about it, you know, to update. Um, but I want to make sure that we're addressing what Tim Smith's actual concern is. Uh, if, if that's his concern, then, you know, that's something that we need to take seriously. Uh, but if his concern is something else altogether, then, you know, I want to make sure that I'm addressing his actual concern.
So I want to address Tim's concern, but I don't want to lose sight of what I understood to be a prior agreement. With input from the highway superintendent about how this. How this driveway would be configured as part of this plan. Now I'm open to the idea that, um. Or from a planning board perspective. I, we will enforce what the highway department wants for this driveway. So if Keith feels like the current conditions are not adequate, then. That's what I, what, that's what I need to know. So, so I have not yet personally spoken to Keith about the current condition of the driveway.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine to talk to Keith as well. I guess the, the, the observation I have is that our driveway is not dissimilar from. Many slash most other driveways up and down River Road. Um, and I would just want, you know, I would want to be. Treated in the same way that all other properties are treated. I don't think there's anything that, uh, you know, makes our agricultural. Operation significantly different in the use of that road from, um, from others. Um, and if, you know, if there's no other, no other issue. Uh, with, you know, besides this, um, gravel runoff, you know, which I think can be addressed. I, you know, I'd like to keep this prior existing non-conforming, um, entrance and exit.
Do you mind if I chime in?
Go ahead. Who's, who's chiming in?
All right, Chris Green again.
Chris Green.
Yeah. So I could be wrong about this and you'd again have to talk to Keith. But I thought in Whately that 10 feet off the road had to be paved. Uh, to every driveway. Does that exist in all driveways in Whately? Absolutely not. Um, I'm waiting for someone to say the same thing about my driveway at Nine River Road. Um, I had my gravel driveway at 25 River Road gravel forever. Ethan redid his driveway and. Paved both inlets to his horseshoe driveway. I think there is a law in Whately that says. That, you know, 10 feet off the road needs to be paved. Does everyone do that? No.
Can I interrupt, Chris? Because my understanding is that there, there's this. Principle, of course, that, that we informally refer to as grandfathering, right? If there's an existing, used and existing driveway, what, whatever that's in place. Before a regulation goes into effect, then, um, that's allowed, that's allowed to persist.
Perfect.
But when there is, as was the case in Seven River Road, there's a change in use. There's a new. Plan for the property. It's no longer whatever it was before. Now it's outdoor indoor, you know. There's marijuana cultivation. Then the, when there's a change of use, that creates the opening. For requiring upgrades to current conditions.
Yeah, that was my, that was my only, that was my, that's why I said I, I didn't really know. I just know now that they require that, even when I built my garage at my own property, they wanted me to pave. You know, the front of the driveway. Now my driveway is paved, but it took me 10 years to do it. But I just, I think that that would be. Because I'm sure that my new property that's in front of Seven River Road, Nine River Road is going to require that same. Paving. And I just wanted to say, if that was the case, I would be more than happy. When they're paving mine to do that same thing. But I think as Jared said too, is just make sure that. You know, all the abutters get what they want before that happens.
Yeah.
So if Tim, eh, you know, I, I know that, that, that line is cutting into Tim's property. Um, because I plowed their driveway and everything and I know Tim and I, I hope we all get along and everything's good. So I think it would be an easy fix to. Take a walkthrough with the neighbors and stake out exactly where that driveway is supposed to go on that line. And then, like I said, I'm going to have to pave mine because mine is obviously not new. It, I mean, it is new. It's not grandfathered in. Um, I'd be more than happy to, you know, pave that. It would be very inexpensive. So. If that makes anybody else happy on the meeting, um, I think that would be just.
So right now, I, I'm looking for the, the path that is. Most acceptable all around. I do want to, I know that, let's see. So. I want to give Tim a chance to weigh in about the driveway issue, but I'm going to recognize. Um, Isaac, who has his hand up and then JD and then get to Tim. So Isaac, you've got the floor. You have to come off of mute, however.
How about now? Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you now.
Right. Um, so I, um, I'm legal counsel for DMC and Jared just. Um, informally asked me to hop on to this. Um, and I, I think I can. I can provide a little bit of clarity on this. This pre-existing non-conforming use question, also known as grandfathered in. And there's. There, there's really two different categories. There's, there's, uh, pre-existing uses and there's pre-existing structures. And, um, a change in use, um, often triggers. Uh, necessary changes to structures. Um, but just the change of use on its own wouldn't. Um, wouldn't take the driveway out of the pre-existing non-conforming, uh, structure category. Even though it's not, uh, what we typically consider a structure, it falls into that category rather than use. Um. And so I mean, I, I spoke to Jared and there's, there is clearly a problem with, um, the entrance to the driveway. Because really the old driveway is still there in addition to the new driveway. They've just become kind of one widened entrance. Um, so I mean, I think Jared has already said this, but I, what makes the most sense is to, you know. Work with, um, the highway department and the interested parties. To, you know, come up with a solution that addresses the actual issue. Um, but I, I don't think that the regulations, you know, regarding, you know, paving the. The entrance to the driveway are, are the issue here. I think, I think the issue is, is there gravel runoff? Uh, is there an encroachment into a, in a, a neighbor's property? Um, and, and how do we address the actual issues here? Um, yeah, I would just, I would just kind of make that distinction between. What, what would be required in the regulations versus, you know, what are real issues that need to be addressed?
Okay. All right. I appreciate that. Very helpful. JD, you're next. You may have to come off mute too. Oh, I can bear, you're muted JD.
Yep, better. Uh, Chris made a statement about the driveway paving and per the. Tunnel Whately Highway Regulations, the first eight feet of the driveway as measured. Shall be paved with the tumorous concrete, minimum thickness of two inches unless the town road is unpaved. So left eight feet.
So it's, so there's the question of whether, as Isaac. Points out that the existing non-conforming structure, the existing gravel drive. May, um. Not be legally, there may be no legal authorization to force it to be moved. But we do want to resolve the issue with, with, with the abutter to the north. So Tim. Um, what, what are your thoughts about where this conversation is going with respect to existing plans to? Resolve your concern about, um, encroachment on your property and so forth.
Yeah, so looking at, at the, um, the, the plan you have on, on the screen. If the old driveway is still sitting next to the new one, that's what people are following. And when they, especially when the site work got done and the dump trailers were coming in. Um, they would cut that grass off on my corner of my lot. And then every other one person coming down. Afterwards would just follow the lines and, you know, so that's how it just kept encroaching, um, north. And I know Chris backfilled everything, but now all that does is make. The driveway look like it's even further north. So Jared did put a bucket out there with a sign in it. Um, but maybe. Like Chris has done on his property, a landscaping rock on the old driveway. Would deter everyone big enough. So if you hit it, you would know it.
Yeah. I do feel like we need a solution here. I mean, I will do a little bit more research about. Whether, whether the planning board could enforce the, um, paving, the. The installation of a paved apron per current highway regulations. I'm not going to assert that claim tonight. But what I do want is some effort between now and the next planning board meeting in June. To identify a solution. that might fall short of a paved apron, but would perhaps as Tim suggests, use rocks or something else so that the, uh, a proper entrance from the road further to the south, you know, roughly, roughly following what this plan would, would require. If not paved, would be put into place.
Something, something well-defined, you know, that you, you know where you're supposed to be going. Yeah.
Cause it did feel to me like the current gravel entrance is just, it's a very wide and ill-defined gravel area leading to Seven River Road. And if that, that's why I think a paved apron solves the problem because it makes it very clear what the driveway is. I also understand that DMCTC may not want to, um, incur the cost and, and disruption of putting in such a thing, but if we, so we can find another solution that creates the equivalent of a well-defined apron that leading to a lot of debris into the road and just ensures that drivers are not, are, are, are entering sufficiently far to the south of the property line that we just don't have this issue anymore.
That's, uh, totally agreeable. I will work with Tim and Chris on this as well.
Okay. All right. So that's my request that we will, that's, the landscape screening is something we'll revisit offline, not in a planning board meeting by the end of September. The driveway issue, um, I don't necessarily feel I'm, I'm going to need to put this back on the planning board agenda for an actual planning board meeting. But I'd like to understand what the plan is or there, I'd like to have correspondence with concurrence from Tim Smith by the next planning board at the end of June that we have a plan. And if we, if I'm not satisfied by the next planning board meeting, that progress has been made. I will put this back on the planning board meeting agenda for the end of June.
I, I'll just intend to send an email CC to, you know, to you and Tim.
Okay. I believe that we've fully addressed the DMCTC site condition topic. Does anyone disagree or have a question or?
Well, I had one, or just a question, observation I had put on my list. Wondering about security, because in the past it was always a guy sitting in a pickup truck. Um, from about eight o'clock to four in the morning. And I, I just wondered, is that, is that, is that security requirement gone or, or, or what?
So let me just, I'll, I'll give the floor to Jared in a, in a moment, but I'll just say, in general, security is not a planning board purview. I mean, that's really between, um, the operator of the facility and the Canada's Control Commission. And I've inquired and I am continuing to inquire with Wheatley Public Safety about if they have any concerns, but it's not, we don't have any conditions in our site review about it. And I certainly understand that, um, DMCTC has to be very careful about discussing their security arrangements in a public forum. So with that preamble, uh, and I see Isaac has raised his hand, but I'll first give the floor to Jared to respond, however you would like to, Jared.
Yeah, uh, I mean, uh, Isaac, take it away.
Okay, yeah. Um, I just, I wanted to make sure that, uh, we really limit what we say about the security at the site, um, at a public meeting. Um, the way that it's typically handled is, uh, the marijuana establishment, Jared in this case, coordinates with, um, you know, local police and fire. And, um, you know, Tim, if you or any abutters have concerns about security, I think, um, you can contact Jared or you can, um, you can contact the police department and they can work with Jared. Uh, we just can't do it in like a public forum setting.
So I'm independently reaching out. I have independently reached out to the police chief. Just to find out if the police chief has any concerns, any Wheatley resident, Tim, Ethan, anyone can feel free to reach out independently. But, um, I'm doing it just as, as a member of the planning board to just make sure that there's, there's no other issues, though I wouldn't necessarily need to report that to other people. All right. So we're not, I think that's it on the security topic. Let's stop sharing. I think, um, I think we're done with this topic.
Could I say one more thing about the driveway?
Okay, Chris, go for it.
Uh, I think half of the problem was me building my new building as far as the driveway goes. Um, I used Seven River Road's driveway. I think all the trucks pulling in kind of cut that off. Um, I will have that fixed by the end of the weekend. And I will talk to Tim and we'll map it out where he wants it to go. And I'll be glad, I have a ton of rocks over there. I'll be glad to stick a rock in there if Jared's okay with it. Uh, but I do take responsibility for sort of maybe messing up the front of that driveway. I tried to fix it, but I think I might have widened it just a little too much. Um, and that's, that's it. So I think I resolved that problem though, without, without any other issue between me and.
Yeah. Chris, I think that it was really Kent Brothers when they started. I walked over to the guy on the dozer. Told him to take his, tell him to take his trucks a little bit wider swing, but they already done the damage. It was set in place back then.
Okay. But I appreciate that. I, I'll take responsibility for something.
Okay.
We can work it, yeah, I'll work it out with you. And then again, like I said in the beginning of the meeting, as far as the fence line goes. Me, me, you and Ethan would take a walk. Let's figure it out and just get it done. Cause like I said, it impacts me as much as it does you, as much as it does Ethan. I want to make it look nice and we'll make it happen.
Awesome. Awesome. Thank you. I want to thank everyone for your participation in this conversation for being, you know, cordial and respectful and, um, I, I think it's ideal. I was very, I'm very pleased that with this sort of shared sense of working this out together. I don't necessarily feel this needs to be a recurring item on the planning board meeting. Again, I want everyone to feel like if, for whatever reason you don't feel you, that having this on the planning board agenda would be helpful in, in getting action, then I'm willing to consider that. But for the time being, I'd like to, my expectation is that all of you are going to work together as friends and neighbors and sort this all out to everyone's satisfaction. And I'll poke my nose in from time to time just to make sure all is well. But I don't, I, I, I don't necessarily see that this is going to have to be on the planning board agenda again anytime soon. And I think we'll all be grateful for that. So thank you all. Uh, we're ready now to leave this topic and move on to something much less interesting, exciting. So any of you are done with, uh, DMCTC can feel free to go back to your regular lives. Have a great night and thank you again.
Thanks, Brent. Appreciate it.
Jared, again, thank you, you know, um, for bringing this to my attention. I'm joking that, you know, no, no good deed. You didn't have to. Um, but I'm glad you did. Please stay in touch. And, um, I don't want anyone to be left feeling that, um, I put this on the agenda out of any feeling that, um, DMCTC was not acting in a, you know, neighborly way of like a, the kind of business we would like to have in Wheatley. So thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks guys. Catch you soon.
All right. See you later. All right. So the next topic is going to be the, um, revisions to the common driveway and side lot access special permit application. I know you all have been dying for that, for that topic. So I'm going to get ready to do my screen share again. Share my screen. I don't know. I'm gonna have to share my whole screen. Okay. So to catch you all up, we had discussed at our last meeting, a revision that we should revise our special permit application. We don't on the planning board deal with special permits very often. But we just had to do one recently and it, uh, we were, we had to absorb all the costs of advertising and notices. So we've, we discussed updating the proposal. We had a draft that we circulated at last meeting. Uh, there are questions about how the form didn't seem to necessarily require an owner signature. And it wasn't clear in the original form if, you know, how do we tell whether there's a, the applicant for a special permit is the same or different from the owner, blah, 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 blah. It was suggested that I follow up with town council. I in fact followed up with Art, the next best thing. Um, Lynn Sibley, our acting town administrator. And she felt her advice was that we should modify the instructions to make it clear that, uh, if the applicant is not the owner, then some letter of support from the, you know, non-applicant owners is required. So I got kind of a sense of what recommended language from Lynn to be, to add to the instructions. And then I kind of went beyond the, instead of just tweaking the old planning board application form, I pulled down the most up-to-date zoning board of appeals application form for special permits. As I asked myself, why should a application to the ZBA for a special permit look very different than an application to the planning board for a special permit? I mean, special permits are special permits. There are different organizations, there are different boards that handle different kinds of special permits. But the status quo is that the ZBA's form and the planning board's form look very different. So, and the ZBA is doing special permits a lot. So I created, and what you're looking at, what I'm sharing is a revised, proposed application for special permit for the planning board just for side lot driveway access or common driveway permits. Cause those are the only two in the zoning bylaws that we handle. I took the form from the ZBA and edited it to make it appropriate for us. Replacing ZBA with planning board and, you know, wherever that was appropriate. All right. This language down here is pulled directly from the ZBA application form, which is what we, this was really the motivation. We wanted to make it clear in our application that the full cost of advertising, all legal notices and mailings to abutters would be the applicant's responsibility. That's kind of the whole reason to do this. We didn't, our current form doesn't say this and thus we incurred the cost ourselves. So it's fixed here. Also, the ZBA form happens to explicitly request what the relationship is between the owner and the applicant. So I left that in. And then I've added to our instructions, that language that I roughly got from Lynn. And the instructions are basically, in all other respects, the same instructions as on our current form. We also fixed the instructions to point out that applicants should be familiar with highway department regulations for driveways. So those are the main fixes. So I believe that this, what I'm sharing with you, which is looks very similar, has a very similar look and feel to the ZBA special permit application. As instructions appropriate for us for special permits for side lot and common driveways also includes like our current application form, the, it incorporates the relevant section of the bylaws and it has a page for handwritten abutters. I think this form does everything we would want in a new revised application for a planning board special permit. And I would welcome any comments or feedback before, and it, and hopefully maybe a motion to vote to approve. So the floor is open. I see Sarah.
Do you want to put on something on about accurate plan saying electronic file is accepted? And also an electronic list of the abutters, because eh, just that electronic.
Yes, okay. So.
Welcome.
A so, that's right. So there should be. So let's take this separately. So this thing about an accurate plan. So you're suggesting, right now we get it as a, we don't put any details on. We don't put requirements on the plan, scale or anything like that. We just say.
At some point, it needs to be on paper if we need to sign it, but other than that, it's lovely to have electronic files for.
But we don't really need, my knowledge, we don't need to sign the plans for special permits.
So it's just a thought in terms of our files and space saving and that years and years and years, I think decades old requirement from the state saying go paperless.
What if we added a sentence at part one that just say, an electronic copy of the plan would, is encouraged to, uh, allow.
Right. I mean, at some point we have to have a hard copy of this for wet signatures.
Right, right. But let me try this language on you. An electronic electronic copy of the plan is encouraged to, um, overall.
And along those lines, is this, um, a fillable form?
It's not a fillable form. That was like for me, a little bridge too far, Sarah, like figuring out the Adobe stuff. And I, I worried like, I see a lot of people are still printing these things and handwriting on them.
We're definitely in both worlds.
Yeah, yeah. And, um, you know, maybe doing a version of this as a fillable form, so having two versions available.
Yeah. I just know how abysmal my own personal handwriting is.
Yeah, no, I know. But, um, yeah, and I don't myself know. I, I'd have to spend some time learning how to create a fillable form using Adobe or something like that. So. This, this, again, I sort of thought if this works for the ZBA and they deal with these a lot, like it, it roughly will work for us. Since the last time we did a special permit besides this year was 2010, like it doesn't happen a lot.
I mean, I, I think there probably needs to be a push from town administration to get all these forms fillable. And there should be somebody there who hopefully has a skill, the skill set to do that, but it's just a thought. But yes, if we're going to do one fillable form, it should be consistent throughout town too. But yes, saying we would like, try to get our subtle, less paper, more electronic in there.
So the abutters, so I think just making a recommendation. Cause I think the, the premise here is really captured in the very first part of the instructions. You know, meet informally with us before submitting an application. That gives us a chance to have a conversation, make sure everyone understands what we need and answer any questions. So I don't have to over specify all of this in the instructions.
Your content is, yes.
Yeah. But then you made a really good point about, um, a certified copy of the abutter list from the town assessor.
That would be awesome.
Yeah.
Can't argue with that.
Because we're going to have to do, we have to do a public hearing.
And we have certainly ran into a problem within old abutter list in the past.
So what if we do something, maybe three and four can be combined? So what if we do something, maybe three and four can be combined? A certified list, list of, all owners' names.
If you need to state who it's certified by.
Yeah, a list, let's do this. A list of all. List. Running premises well as.
So basically three, four and five are all encompassed within the 300 feet thing?
I'm sorry, you said three, four and five?
Right. A list of owners' names and current addresses, abutting the premises. A list of owners' names and current addresses of the land immediately adjoining the land of the abutters. So if you just say within 300 feet, you got three and four together. And what's different about?
Is that, but what it, are there scenarios at which on a, pro, a property might lie across a highway, but, more than 300 feet away? Like if you have a long rectangular lot that abuts the, the railroad line along 90 or so. I'm not sure. I'm just trying to get the language for three correct, combining immediate abutters. As well as the, as well as those. Of all owners' names and current addresses of property, putting a promise as well as.
Number five isn't clear.
Okay. Are you seeing what I'm editing live on screen or, cause I eliminated, right now I'm trying to combine the original three and four.
Isn't all that clear?
Oh, you mean this one about owners of land across all highways?
Within what, right.
Yeah.
Within what distance? And do they need to abut?
That's a, that's really a good question. I'm not sure how to.
Yeah, because if like Interstate 91, goes through it, does the people on the other side of the interstate really matter? They agree.
If they're within 300 feet, they're going to be captured anyways.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just, um. All right. So, so maybe, so maybe in the interest of time, I'll, I, I think we'll table further discussion or at least let's see if there are any other comments or questions. I think, right now I'm going to just highlight, this three and four and take action to work on the language between now and our next meeting. Like so, I'm not, this is not a hair on fire urgent thing, cause I just don't feel there's another special permit coming right up. But I don't want to drag out, because it was very expensive, the, the last two special, public hearings that we had to do. Um, so let me just try to work on that. Go ahead JD.
Why are we, I understand you want to be like the zoning board, but not having, the owner's signature on the document. And having a, an addendum to it of his letter of support. Every, permit application I have to file to build requires an owner's signature. It's a building permit, a septic permit, a well permit. All of them require the owner's signature.
Well, so I think the point JD, I hear what you're saying. Um, so, I, I think the point of this form is that the form, it's that you're, you're, somebody's making application. So there's a name of an applicant, a signature of an applicant, other information of the applicant, and information about what's the relationship to the owner. And I think in most cases, the relationship to owner will be same. You know, and so this form deals with it.
And when I came, when I came before you for my property Egypt Road, I was not the owner.
Right, right. And I, again, the form, so a, the owner, so this is true of the ZBA, property owners are not necessarily the only ones allowed to, make applications for special permits. But the ZBA then, gets additional documentation from the property owner in that case.
Okay. I mean, you, and you, we find lots of properties right now that are owned by real estate trusts. You know, you, you leave, you, you put the, your house in the name of your three children or whatever, and they are the trustees of it. And then one of them tries to do something without the permission of the other two.
No, I, and I understand that. And this is why, by adding this to the instructions, where then off, so the form requires disclosure by the applicant. Is the applicant the owner or not?
Yep.
Okay, that's right here. And then the instructions say that if the applicant is not the owner, cause also like in the case of the common driveway special permit, there are multiple owners involved, all of them sharing the common driveway. And so only one of them is submitting, like in the case of the beans, Kaylee Bean was the applicant.
Yep.
She didn't own all the other properties. So we, but we, got their, you know, they, they confirmed by their presence in the public hearing, that they were supportive of the special permit in this case.
Well, I guess what I'm getting at is that, is that our due diligence to make sure that whoever's applying for something, that they are in fact, the actual owners or they have the approval of the owners of the property and that, you know, the consensus of, of the orders, if there's multiple of them, that they all want this to happen.
Yes, that's true.
Them, that they have to prove to us that they have consensus from the owner or owners that they want to do this. Are we putting on us or the applicant?
Well, I mean, there's really, I mean, in a world where there, there could be forgers. I mean, yes, we always, we routinely have to do due diligence, in all the things that we do, right?
Yep.
As we handle site reviews, we collect documents, um, so, so this is no different. The main thing is that, um, uh, in many cases, and probably in most cases, the signature of the applicant, will be the same as the signature of the owner and the form will allow that to be made clear.
Okay. All right.
So I think this, I think this will work.
I, I, I would just say that we make, I don't know, if the applicant is not the owner of Detective Property or Properties, letter of support, from all of the, or not applicant owners be submitted, if there's more than one.
Yes, that's what I've highlighted on the screen.
From all.
Yeah.
From all, from all.
Yeah. So if the applicant, right now the language in the instructions reads, maybe you're, you can't quite read it on your phone. If the applicant is not the owner of the affected property or properties, letters of support from all non-applicant owners must be submitted at time of application.
Okay. Yeah, I see that now. Emphasis on all. Yep. Okay.
I mean, that's pretty easy for us to double check with the property card.
Yeah.
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 For our due diligence.
Right.
Yeah.
And that just serves as a reminder, like the form requires the disclosure, but we need to confirm everything that is provided to us on these forms, just like we have to do on site review applications and.
How, Brent, how up to date are the property cards? Because quite often a piece of property changes hands and, I go to pull permits and it still has all the previous owner's information on it.
I have no idea, honestly.
Good question for the assessors.
Yeah.
Cause that happens, like my property Egypt Road, according to the town, belonged to fair for a year after I bought it. I got the tax bill, but online it showed that it's still belonged to him. Yep. I don't think it ha, I don't think it's updated all the time. I think there's a lag.
Yeah.
And current assessors maps don't show a property on Chris's green, Chris Green's property at all.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah. I mean, I imagine this is part of the transition from the now retired assessor to whomever. And we don't, to my knowledge, we don't have a new assessor.
Can I chime in on this?
Sure.
Um, I have to pull property cards pretty often for work. And I will say, Whately is actually more up to date than a lot of the other small towns around that have minimal resources. So, um, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't bother anybody in the town office about it too much, because I think that they actually are doing a better job than a lot of other people out there. Um, and JD, if you're concerned about your project, your property on Egypt Road, I would say something and just say, hey, I bought this, you know, here's my bill of sale or whatever. Here's my title to the property, you know, can you update it? And I'm sure they'll get it done.
Yeah, I, I'm on the FCI CIP advisory board and they talk about getting the accurate information uploaded from the assessors into the system when they issue permits. And there's definitely a lag. Something about the merging of the, the, the data.
Okay.
So we just want to make sure it's right. That's all.
All right. Well, I'm going to close this topic and take action to bring, um,
Table it.
Another, yeah, we're going to table it for now. So no motion, no vote, um.
It says in the assessors maps, it says JDR dash.
It does now, but for like the first year it didn't.
Yeah. Dear feels worse.
Dear feels worse.
I don't know if they've still updated ours.
Okay. Well, I think we're ready. We're at the, the last gasp of this meeting. So we're, we're now just down to approval of minutes. Um, and so again, I'll share my screen. So we had one, about one batch of minutes going back to January 31, that the only thing that wasn't, uh, we didn't have at the time, meeting or two ago, was what this particular date was. Judy gave me the date. We have the updated documentation. So I believe that, um, the minutes of January 31st, 2024 are now complete and accurate.
I will make that motion to accept the updated minutes of January 31st.
Okay. Motion is made.
I suck it.
Eighty seconds. We've got a funny echo going on. What is that about?
Sorry for the wicked.
Um, okay, motion's been made in second. Um, Sarah. I, JD.
I.
Uh, Laura.
I.
Okay. And Brant is I. So the minutes of, January 31 are approved unanimously. Yay for that. And then the last one, is just our last meeting, April 24th. Get this. So I circulated. I'm going to do my screen share again. Very good. Okay. On, so all the markup. So I circulated minutes. Judy did some markup. So corrected acre to acres, deleted the word word, just proposed changes. Cutie. Added a comment about the citation errors. Uh, did she make any other, I don't think she made any other changes. She added the word amended in documents reviewed. And I think that was the extent of it. And so I looked at all of her, revisions to the minutes of April 24th, and that all seemed good to me. Any other comments or questions or corrections to the minutes of our April 24th meeting?
Nope.
And hearing none, then maybe I'll hear a motion to approve. Sarah's making that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the April 24th minutes as amended.
As amended. Very good. And maybe JD's making a.
I'll strike him it.
All right. JD has in fact, I don't know, that's leading the witnesses, but, uh, thank you JD. All right. Roll call, Sarah.
Yes.
JD?
Yes.
Laura.
Yes.
Brandt is yes. So those minutes are also approved as amended. So I'll get those cleaned up and posted. So we're done with that. So we're now into additional items, not anticipated. Sarah, I believe you might have such an additional item.
I do. I dropped off, um, Tom Litwin's, um, plaque and he was absolutely thrilled. And it was lovely to see Tom. Um, he says he's going to put it on the wall of his office.
Good.
Um, and while I was there, he asked me about the property to the north, of 148 State Road. It is parcel 12 dash zero dash 24 dash two. It's, um, abutting, the Monahan Trucking property. It's the barn that had the addition on it. And as part of that, looking back into my stuff from fall of 22, I believe, we had wrote a letter to the select board, uh, not the select board, the.
Building inspector.
The building inspector, that our number one item was, that there would be, no, let me find this. I have it somewhere. Yeah. No, I got all these really crazy unsigned letters. Ah, letting to builder inspector. Item, no, that was a whole different building inspector. But basically it said, no activities, that have to do with the continuous, the property next door shall show up on that property.
Right.
I can't, again, can't read my own writing. Used for commercial, nothing on that property should be used for commercial purposes, having to do with the property next door.
Yeah.
Um, and I have drove by many a time and it does really look like there's Monahan Trucking trucks parked back there. And that that building wouldn't be used for commercial use or anything. So what are, what do we need to do? Talk to the building inspector to say, hey, it doesn't look like they're complying with the, what the planning board specifically asked for. And I think a September 6th, 22 letter.
So let me, I, I think, I'll plan between now and our next meeting, just to do a drive by and take a photo. Um, and then pull that letter. And then I think we'll, I don't think that I need to, you know, have further deliberation as a planning board about this. I'll communicate, I'll, um, pull that letter. Cause I believe we have it in our electronic files.
Oh, yeah, that's another item I need to talk to you about.
Uh, so I'll pull that letter. I'll add a current photograph. And I'll convey to the planning board and I'll, I expect that I'll CC the town administrator.
Yeah, I don't know if the select board were also very. involved and brought this extra to our attention because there were some anonymous letters that were sent to us.
At the time.
So I don't know if you want to. Anyway, probably the town administrator is perfect.
Okay. Very good. All right, so we give Tom, we give Tom an award and he responds by giving us more work.
Tom.
Okay.
I couldn't get into OneDrive. It's asking for dual authentication.
Really?
Yes, of course I have three separate OneDrives. But yeah, so I don't know if.
For the planning board, one.
Planning box. So I couldn't get in. But that's maybe something we can deal with offline to make sure.
Yeah, I'll, I'll email you. So I'll just write Sarah, OneDrive.
And do we want to address a letter or an email we got from Dan Dennehy?
So he sent it to multiple parties?
I just investigated our bylaws.
Okay.
And one seventy-one dash twenty-seven item C. A mobile home may be occupied as temporary shelter by the owner and occupier of a residence that has been destroyed by fire or other natural holocaust on the site of such residence and for a period not to exceed twelve months while the residence is being rebuilt. Any such mobile home shall be subject to the provisions of the state sanitary code. So I don't know if we want to confirm with health that it is properly hooked up to sanitary. And I don't know who would.
Well, let's just, first of all, let's just pause for a second here. So was I mean, I, I mean, I received an email personally in regard to one fifty-one River Road.
Yes.
What I was, what the, and I have not yet had a chance personally to do a drive-by. Have you, Sarah?
Oh, yes, multiple times.
So you've, so you've seen what's there. The letter, the email seems to, what I take from the email is that at one fifty-one River Road, there is an accessory apartment, so a structure, presumably a detached structure. It's not part of the existing building. And this email says that the ZBA issued a special permit to, for this accessory apartment, but apparently.
Find out more. It is a mobile home. It looks like it is on wheels.
Okay. Interesting. So the ZBA, you're saying, so we believe that the ZBA issued a special permit for a mobile home to be used as an accessory apartment?
That's why I think maybe more clarification on what that special permit from ZBA. But I wanted to add to that. From my appearance, from River Road, it appears to be a mobile home on wheels.
Okay.
Which doesn't seem to, for me to comply with what an accessory apartment. Well, my concern as I drove by is what's the septic and water situation?
Absolutely, absolutely. All right. Well, I think we have some work to do. Just gather some facts, right? We've got some allegations made in an email. I think one action I will take is to follow up with the ZBA to find out like what they did. I mean, I can, I suppose I can look up when they had a, their hearing. I mean, I just, I don't know how long ago this may have happened. So I want to find out from the ZBA what they believe the facts are. I'd like to do, if anybody, like again, it's always helpful if somebody happens to be driving by not in a super hurry and take a picture. So I'll try to get by there, you know.
I'll take a picture for you. Don't worry about it.
Okay, but I'd like to see what's there. I'd like to understand what the ZBA has issued a permit for. And we go from there.
Yeah, I think there's definitely more investigation, but it, because it certainly seems to imply that our well, it was quite an email.
Okay.
But it seems to imply that our how we have changed accessory apartments. And.
Okay. All right. So it's definitely worth noting, I've been in meetings related to affordable housing and just housing in general, where it's been suggested that one of the solutions to making creating more affordable housing is allowing manufactured homes. And it's been asserted that you know, in, in, in the past, people associated, they didn't want trailer parks in their community because that seemed to that implied certain things to people about look or whatever. However, manufactured homes have come a long way and are not necessarily they look, they can look very much like a, you know, built from scratch home. They could be very visually appealing. They could fit well in a neighborhood, but be much more cost effective to build than, you know, create a new foundation and build everything. So it's been the word has been out that towns might consider looking at whether we should be revising our bylaws to allow manufactured homes, or at least, but we don't have any recommendations. I'm not yet ready to go there. So.
I am, I, I, my family in much less affluent areas of the country. It's a place to live that you can afford.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know personally, like I can understand that Waitley residents may feel like Waitley has to be all, you know, single family bespoke, built by hand, homes from the ground up. But that just perpetuates an affordability problem. And if we can find a way to make sure our bylaws are not precluding the the placement of manufactured homes for single or even multifamily dwellings. Anyway, it would be worth learning more about.
We have, there are at least one, possibly two on Long Plain Road that I'm sure were grandfathered in.
Okay.
So.
You mean trailers or accessory apartments?
That appear to not have a basement or crawl space.
Okay. Okay. All right. So some items to track for our next meeting. So we've got one forty-eight State Road and one fifty-one River Road.
And it's actually the property to the north of one forty-eight.
Okay, wait. Yeah, I've made a note, north of one forty-eight State Road. And I know exactly, and I too have driven by there not as regularly, but I've looked and said, boy, there seem to be a lot of trucks like back around there where I thought there weren't supposed to be trucks, but.
Brandon, is the one forty-eight commercial or residential?
So one forty-eight is commercial, but to the north of it is residential.
Because Kyle owns one forty-eight, but his mom owns one of north of it.
That's the point. So there was a proposal, the planning board at the Monahan's request brought a zoning revision, just like we did with your property on Egypt Road to rezone the parcel north of one forty-eight State Road to, from residential, from AR one to commercial. That was voted down at town meeting. There was a fair amount of resident opposition. And there was no, nobody, no Monahan spoke in faith. There is no support of the rezoning and there was substantial opposition to the rezoning. So the result was, the rezoning wasn't approved, so it remains residential. But then they built this large structure.
The barn was there. They put an addition on the barn.
That's right. There was a barn there and they put a large addition on it. And the story was that it was going to just be used for storage of personal
Yeah, we don't know.
vehicles or whatever, and then it would not just become an extension of the commercial activities adjacent. But it does look like the commercial activities have now expanded onto the residential property. At least it looks that way if you're driving by.
Are we enforcing the rules about unregistered vehicles in Waitley?
We never enforce anything except based on if, you know, we don't do anything proactively. We have no resources to do that.
Vehicles on my property are currently registered.
Mine are too, but there's a lot of properties in town where there's an abundance of unregistered vehicles.
I have certainly had a history of many unregistered vehicles on my property.
Yeah. I do plan as, after we get beyond town meeting. And I'd like us all to be thinking about priorities for, you know, work for the board. I would say in new board projects and new initiatives going, looking ahead to twenty twenty-five. With Judy leaving the board, so much, so much of what the board did was really, you know, she really drove a lot of our agenda because she was thinking ahead and and we need to sort of step up and think about what are the things.
I think we're going to, I mean, I would like to know who are enforcer and we have problems with enforcing. But I think our subdivision takes precedence.
Yeah. Yeah. So, so we will revisit this topic, not tonight because it's seven oh three AM. I think, so I just want to find out if there are any other additional items not anticipated. Because hearing none.
Motion to adjourn?
Three, we could make a motion to adjourn. Or JD, are you offering a motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
All right. And Sarah, are you seconding that motion?
Definitely.
All right, any objections? Then it is seven oh three. We are adjourned.